Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. We're gonna have the invocation by Pastor Joshua Goodrum, I'm sorry, from Miracle Temple Ministries in Riverdale, Georgia. Be followed by the pledge of allegiance, if you would, stand with me.
Bow your heads, let us pray. Father God, we come to you humbly swear, we know how. God, we ask you to, Lord God, show up in these meetings tonight, God. God, we ask you to look upon our board of, our chairman, our board of commissioners, God. God, give them a heart, God, to rule upon the people, Lord God. Let wisdom abide in this house, God. And we ask you to move by your spirit, Lord God. And let each and one that is here, Lord God, God, respect one another, God, and hear each other out. In the name of Jesus, we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the December 1st, 2015 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Before doing so, does any member want to offer any amendments? Hearing none, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Uh, second, it promptly moved to second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Approval of the November 17th, 2015 Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the November 17th, 2015 Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Is there a second? Uh, second, it promptly moved to second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have anyone signed up for public comment tonight. Therefore, we will now consider the request of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
And as she's coming, I'm gonna give everybody a bit of history right quick. On yesterday, November 30th, 1858, Clayton County was formed, created by then-Governor Joseph E. Brown, who signed into legislation creating Clayton County as Georgia's 127th county in the state of Georgia. So I just wanted to let everybody know that our birthday was yesterday.
Yeah, Ms. Brewer, will you take number three separate, please?
Could you take them all separately? All of them separately?
Every single one of these things?
Absolutely.
Beginning with number one, it's a request first contract amendment, RFP number 1442, widening and reconstruction of Anvil Block Road from Maustur Drive to Allen Drive, Clayton County, Georgia, in an amount of $330,536.06 for the construction of a central driveway at the Anvil Block Complex with C.W. Matthews Contracting Company located in Marietta, Georgia. Funding is available through the 2004 SPOSS Funds.
About to read the last part on each and every one.
Each one of them, thank you. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized to chairman or his designee to execute all documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Alright, is there a motion?
I'll move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved to second, any questions?
Yes. Ms. Brewer, because of the, I guess, the volume of the contract, I didn't get a chance to see it, I guess it was in Dropbox.
Yes.
Why is there an amendment?
The company, C.W. Matthews, is currently doing a road widening and construction project there. Because of the construction of the new facilities, the animal control, the police precinct and a possible senior center, then the construction of a central driveway is required. And because they are already doing the contract and widening the road, it was economically feasible to add this to their scope of, uh, scope of work to complete the central driveway.
Okay, so we are using them, and this is the same company who will not use people from our SLBE program, correct? The same company that was cited federally for falsifying documents? And we're still using them, and we did not put this particular one out to bid?
Yes, for the construction of the driveway, again, it is, they are doing a road widening and the utility coordination, and I, we may need the SPOSS Program Manager and TND to explain the technical aspects of it, but to, because it's a continuation of the process, they are widening the road and the driveway is, um...
Their, their contract was already approved and were just...
Already approved, and I'm not sure...
Spanning the scope of their work.
What the SLB participation on this particular contract is, I didn't bring that.
From what I could see in the documentation, it was, we decided not to issue an RFP or B because they were already doing the project.
Yes, already doing the road widening at that location.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions? Alright, hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It's four to one, Commissioner Rooks, opposed. Next, please.
Second is a request for contract amendment for RFP 0459, consultant design services and right-of-way acquisition services for the widening and reconstruction of Mount Zion Boulevard and Battle Creek Road in Clayton County, Georgia. The request is to amend the current contract with Kimberly Horn and Associates Incorporated located in Norcross, Georgia. The amendment is to address design modifications, update of the environmental documents, utility coordination, and additional right-of-way acquisitions for the Mount Zion and Battle Creek Road widening project in the amount of $1,401,025. Funding is available to, through 2004 SPOSS Funds. The department recommendation, consulting quote and amendment are attached to the memo for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the request authorized to chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved to second, any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Rooks.
Ms. Brewer, it says $1,401,025 as a change order. What was their original bid?
I'm looking, I don't know if I brought the original contract.
Mr. Metalka.
And what was the second highest, the person who would've come in second, what was their bid?
I have the original awarded amount. I don't have the other bidders in front of me. But when it was awarded back in '05, the value was $2,46,291. Now, since then, there's been a couple change orders, but that was the original value.
Okay, so my concern is, as has been in the past, is the change orders that exceed the bids that they, that were submitted, which would probably put them ahead of anybody else that bid it a lower bid. Are we doing anything structurally to prohibit this process from going forward in the future?
In this situation, the, the bid, um, well, let me back up. The additional services of this change order are additional services that were not contemplated at the time of the bid 10 years ago. These are for additional services outside the original scope that all the companies bid on.
But it says it's for acquisition. We don't, we don't anticipate we're gonna have to acquire property through Georgia DLT, I think that's what it says. 60% of this is for Georgia DLT acquisitions, so we don't anticipate that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There was a cost in the original RFP, or the bid, the award for right-of-way acquisition. It was based off of, according to the contract, Georgia DOT's current right-of-way acquisition processes. Since that time, Georgia DRT's had numerous changes in the right-of-way acquisition processes. They've released a public acquisition manual in 2008, they updated it earlier this year, that basically changed the process. They pushed a lot of the services they were performing, a part of these projects, as the actual recipient of federal dollars, onto the locals. We have no choice but to provide their services. It was not contemplated at the time of the original bid that we would have to provide these services. So now, since we have to provide these services, we've gone back to the, the vendor, Kimberly Horn, and, and they've given us a man-hour estimate and cost to provide the necessary services per Georgia DRT's current standards and policies.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Next is a request for first contract amendment, RFP 1461.
RFP 1461, Clayton County Juvenile Court Diversion Program. The request is to amend the current contract with ENA Incorporated DBA Neco located in Jonesboro, Georgia, to correct the terms, scope of services, and compensation to reflect the receipt of funding in the amount of hundred, $100,000 for the new grant period. The contract is for the provision of diversion services for juveniles coming under the jurisdiction of the Clayton County Juvenile Court. Funding is available through the Juvenile Court Services Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Grant. The department's recommendation amendment are attached to the memo for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the request, the recommendation authorized to chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, motion dies, going next.
The next is a recommendation for award for RFP 1528, on-call transportation right-of-way acquisition services for Clayton County, Georgia, annual contract for the Transportation and Development Department. The recommendation for award is to the most responsive and responsible proponent meeting the specifications, Deanna Hunt and Associates located in McDonough, Georgia. There are several sources of funding depending on the project that include federal, state, and SPOSS Funds 2004, 2009, and 2015. The evaluation tabulation summary, department's recommendation agreement are attached to the memo for your review, for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized to chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Probably moved to second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next is a recommendation for award for RFP 1534, which is transportation services for the Clayton County Senior Services Department, annual contract. The recommendation for award is to the most responsive and responsible proponent meeting the specifications, MLB Transportation Incorporated located in Tucker, Georgia. Funding is available through the Atlanta Regional Commission Grant and the Senior Services Department's fiscal year 2015 budget. The evaluation tabulation summary, department recommendation agreement are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized to chairman or his designee to execute, execute all documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve.
Is there a second? Uh, second, it promptly moved to second, are there any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Next is a recommendation for award for RFP 1543, Panhandle Road sidewalk construction from McDonough Road to Terror Road. The recommendation for award is to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder meeting the specifications, DAF Concrete Incorporated located in Marietta, Georgia, in the amount of $778,583.75. Funding is available through the 2009 SPOSS Funds. The bid tabulation summary, department's recommendation agreement are attached to the memo for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized to chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Uh, second, the motion is, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Next is a request for a third contract amendment to the contract for value engineering study for the God, rewrote widening project. Request is to amend the current contract with AMEC ENI Incorporated located in Alpharetta, Georgia, in the amount of $4,670 to address the federal highway administration's required update. Funding is available to, through 2004 SPOSS Funds. The department's recommendation, vendor quote and amendment are attached to the memo for your review and information. The quest, request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized to chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. And we did make some changes, uh, to correct some clerical errors in the contract, and we provided you with a substitute contract.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammer.
Yeah, do we have a date now for the God, God be road widening?
We are currently looking at an August of 16 authorization from Georgia DRT. Now, that's contingent on the federal government reauthorizing a new transportation funding bill. Georgia DRT has stopped all projects the last couple months, and it's continuing until Congress reauthorizes a new, um, funding. But it's on track, on their schedule for an August, um, what we consider construction left.
Okay, so I can hold off telling Normandy?
We're pushing as hard as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next is a recommendation for renewal of the fiduciary liability insurance. The recommendation is to renew with BB and T Reis Insurance for the period of December 22nd, 2015 through December 22nd, 2016, with a premium of $30,756. This policy provides insurance coverage for claims alleging breach of duty in the administration of the pension, deferred compensation, and employee benefit plans. Funding is available through the county's general fund. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized to chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'm probably moved to second. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Unless the board members have any other, uh, objection, allow her to take nine, 10, and 11 together.
No objection.
Number nine is a rec, um, recommendation to the county's property and casualty insurance coverage through Edgewood Partners Insurance Center, EPIC for short, insurance brokers and consultants for the period of January 1st, 2016 through January 1st, 2017, with a premium of $196,806 utilizing Travelers Property Casualty Company of America. This policy provides insurance coverage on county-owned and leased buildings, their contents, garage-owned and leased vehicles and equipment. Funding is available through the county's general fund. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized to chairman or his designee to execute all documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. The next is a recommendation for, to renew the county's airport owners and operators' general liability, teleport and aircraft, aircraft hull and liability insurance through EPIC Insurance Brokers and Consultants for the period of January 1st, 2016 through January 1st, 2017, with a premium of $33,477 utilizing Westchester Fire Insurance Company. Funding is available through the county's general fund. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized to chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. The final is a recommendation to renew the county's public entity excess liability insurance through EPIC Insurance Brokers and Consultants for the period of December 31st, 2015 through December 31st, 2016, with a premium of $580,528 utilizing Old Republic Insurance Company. The public excess liability insurance provides for coverage for claims and bodily injury, property damage, public officials liability, law enforcement liability, liability errors and omissions, employment practices liability, employee benefits liability when the amount of the claim exceeds the county's self-insured retention level. Funding is available through the county's general fund. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized to chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. Those are on.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept those.
Is there a second? I'll make the second. Probably moved to second, are there any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The board will now consider the request of Ramona Bivens, Chief Financial Officer.
Any objections, they're taken.
I have a question for, uh, 218, if we could take the first one separately, please.
If we could take 297.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, I have a total of four items for your consideration this evening. Budget Amendment 2-18 is for the Federal Narcotics Condemnation Fund, to amend in funds in the amount of $10,500 to purchase a new vehicle for the sheriff's office.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve.
Uh, second, it promptly moved to second. Questions? Commissioner Emerson.
I do. Mr. Chairman, at the be, at the beginning of, or around the beginning of this fiscal year, there was a conversation about the egregious amount of overtime that the sheriff's office, uh, expended. And this conversation amongst this board, are you were gonna communicate with and work with the sheriff's fiscal, uh, budget, uh, getting that down or finding, finding other sources? I realize the Federal Narcotics Condemnation Fund is discretionary fund for the sheriff's office. My question is, what kind of dialogue have you had with the sheriff around the use of this for other uses other than new cars, such as the overtime expenses that we're paying?
Well, you can't use drug money for, uh, overtime or, uh, salaries. So I did have a conversation with the sheriff. He is, he has met with his command staff, and they are, they have, uh, put a strategy in place in which to mitigate some of the overtime that, uh, has been accruing, uh, in the past. So again, this, his request here, to purchase a vehicle out of narcotics funding, is not subjected to be able to, be used for salaries.
So Ms. Bivens, um, correct me, but that's, I forget the word, it's a long word.
Supplement.
Supplement. That's for budgeted funds, is that right?
That is correct. We can't use federal funds to supplant what we normally would fund.
Okay, so back to my question, since that overtime was not something that is supplanted, since it's not something that we budgeted, how come we can't use this money for that? Or how come the sheriff couldn't use this for that?
I'm gonna check the code, I sent, I sent a response to your email that you had sent early before the meeting. I'm gonna, gonna have to check the code to see those allowable and unallowable uses, but it's to my understanding that these funds can't be used for salaries. There, then there's a whole list, but I'm gonna check and I'll email you in the morning.
Okay, and the distinction is surplanting...
Surplanting.
Versus...
Versus supplementing.
Now, we do set a budget for overtime. There is overtime budget for the sheriff's department, correct?
Not for that millions of dollars that he spends?
No, it's, he wouldn't...
And that's what I'm talking about.
There is a budget for overtime.
Yes.
Okay, if you could send that, please.
I will.
Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Sounds like four to one to me. Commissioner Emerson is opposed.
Okay, Commissioner Hamburg asked me to take 219.
I know, I'm sorry, I was jumping, I'm ready to go.
Oh, okay, so take the rest together. Okay. The next is budget amendment 2-19, is to amend in funds in the amount of $174,522 to cover investigation supplies and court reporter fees for the police department. Budget Amendment 2-20 is from other general government. This is to amend in funds in the amount of $30,320 to replace one sheriff's office vehicle where repair costs exceed the value of the vehicle per our fleet maintenance department. And the last item is a request for refund check in the amount of $500 made payable to Juan Alvarez in Norcross, Georgia. This is refunding the $500 cash bond required for demolition projects not to rebuild.
Alright, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, you're...
Is there a second? Uh, second, it promptly moved to second, are there any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Um...
Opposed?
Thank you.
It's unanimous, thank you.
The board will now consider the request of Chief Staff Attorney, Kristy Barnes.
Please take them together unless someone prefers separately.
Yes, now, if you would take 297 separately, please.
I'd also like 298 considered separately.
97 and 98, items 14 and 15.
Wait a second. Where's the one about? Where's the one about, um, the property?
13. Is that what you're looking for?
Uh-huh. Take that separately.
You want that one too?
Mm-hmm.
296, 97, and 98. Take those separately.
First is Resolution Number 2015-291, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a grant award agreement with the Prosecuting Attorneys Council of Georgia, and in accordance therewith, accept additional grant funds to be used in connection with the Victims of Crime Act and the Clayton County Solicitor General's Office. These are grant funds in the amount of $36,615, with a local match of $9,154 to be used to fund one new position in connection with the VOKA program. Resolution Number 2015-292 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a grant award agreement with the Prosecuting Attorneys Council of Georgia, and in accordance therewith, accept additional grant funds to be used in connection with the Victims of Crime Act and the Clayton County District Attorney's Victim Witness Assistance Program. These are additional grant funds in the amount of $37,082, with a local match of $9,271 to be used to fund one new position in connection with the VOKA program. Resolution Number 2015-293 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to execute right-of-way acquisition contracts with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the Battle Creek Road and Mount Zion Boulevard widening projects. And this will authorize the chairman to execute the documents and otherwise perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. Resolution Number 2015-291... Resolution number twenty fifteen dash two ninety-four is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to apply for and if awarded, accept the fiscal year twenty sixteen local maintenance and improvement grant from the Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Clayton County Transportation and Development Department. And this is a grant in the amount of one million four hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-one cents with a required thirty percent local match in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-two cents for a total project amount of one million nine hundred and ten thousand dollars, two, I'm sorry, one million nine hundred and ten thousand two hundred and eight dollars and eighty-three cents. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash two ninety-five is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept two forfeited vehicles from Clayton County Police Department drug investigations and to authorize the sale of that property in a manner as will be in the best interest of the county. This is the seizure of a two thousand and two Toyota Pre Runner truck and a nineteen ninety-nine Chevrolet Tahoe.
All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve those.
Is there a second? Uh, second, it probably moved in second. Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed. Issue unanimous.
Resolution number twenty fifteen dash two ninety-six is a resolution of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners authorizing the execution, delivery, and performance of an intergovernmental agreement in connection with the acquisition of a certain parcel of land by the Development Authority of Clayton County for economic development purposes, authorizing the appropriation of lawfully available funds to provide financial assistance to the authority for such purposes, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and for other purposes. And I provided the members of the board with a revised draft intergovernmental agreement reflecting some additional language. I've tabbed it for you. And that language reflects that the proceeds, any proceeds not used by the Development Authority will be wired back to the county and also that the Development Authority will lease the site for a term of not less than twenty years and not more than fifty years, including any extensions.
All right, is there a motion?
So, move.
Is there a second? Uh, second, it probably moved in second. Any questions?
Yes. Ms. Barnes, this agreement, does it allow for the Board of Commissioners to have any input on the property after we enter into this agreement? Is this just left to the Development Authority Board?
Well, the Development Authority will have a purchase and sale agreement where they will use these funds to purchase the site. And there are some restrictions that the Development Authority has to adhere to in the purchase of that site. In terms of what happens to the site after we transfer the funds to the Development Authority, um, there. I, I think ultimately, the, the, the Board of Commissioners will be able to play a role in what happens to that site in connection with the Development Authority.
Any other questions?
I do. Um, uh, some place, and I'm not sure what the law is about this board requiring future boards to, uh, take on responsibilities that we have voted on. Does that apply in this or is it something different?
Well, the, the constitution allows the government, governing authorities of, of counties to enter into intergovernmental agreements with other government agencies. The Development Authority would be considered one for a term of not more than fifty years.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed.
Aye.
It's three, uh, four to one. Commissioner Rooks opposed. Next.
Resolution number twenty fifteen dash two ninety-seven is a resolution to authorize the chairman to execute the local option sales tax certificate of distribution and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Nay.
Three, two. Commissioners Hamburg and Gregory opposed. Next, please.
Ordinance number twenty fifteen dash two ninety-eight is an ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically part two, chapter sixty-two, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, article one, general, by adding a new subsection sixty-two dash forty-eight entitled interference with county enforcement officer to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably moved in second. Any questions?
I do. Just curious as to what brought this on or what's and so forth.
Chief Regis.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, two of the primary areas that we have found that the code enforcement officers are having when they engage with individuals is that individuals are refusing to give their identity to the code enforcement officers or sign a citation. And what we wanted to do was create this ordinance to give the individual an extra incentive to comply with the request of code enforcement officer. And bringing in line, we have a similar ordinance in the animal control ordinances, eighteen dash thirty-two, interference with an animal control officer. No person shall interfere with, hinder, or prevent the animal control unit or any other officer in the performance of his duties. And if that person does, then of course, it's a, it's a citation. Right now, when a person refuses to give information to the code enforcement officer, the code enforcement officer has to call a uniformed police officer to the scene. The only alternative there is to charge the person under criminal act obstruction. Hopefully, this would prevent that if the person knew that if they didn't comply, it would give them an additional, uh.
Criminal act.
Citation of interference with a, with a code enforcement officer. And also, if the person refuses to sign a summons, then there will be an additional charge interference with a code enforcement officer. The, uh, the charge is a non-custodial type of charge.
Um, interfering with a code enforcement officer, what penalty does that carry?
Any other questions?
Explain to me, explain to me prima facie evidence of a violation. Any suspected person must upon demand present their identification, give their name, their birth date, their address, their phone number. How is that not in this world of patriot acts and hippos and things, not a violation of a person's property? This isn't limited to just code enforcement officers. I think it says any employee of the county authorized.
Well, specifically.
Sounds like a police state to me, runs in nineteen thirties Germany.
Well, specifically addresses on the code enforcement officer's perspective. We're having so many issues when a code enforcement.
Well, if you can, chief, let's do it for everybody since this isn't just specific to code enforcement officers.
But, um, you know, there are certain criteria that has to be met in order for a law enforcement officer to demand the identification of a person. And of course, if that threshold is not met, then the person doesn't have to present identification. But if there's probable cause articulatable suspicion to believe that a crime has occurred or that a crime will occur, then it's a lawful right of a law enforcement officer to ask for that identification. Now, from a code enforcement perspective, we are finding that a lot of people that are at, especially the commercial businesses, will state, I don't own this business, I just work here. Uh, I'm not gonna give you my name, I'm not gonna give you my address because I have nothing to do, I just work here. And we have found in a lot of cases that that is not the case, that when we dig deeper, that person in fact is a, a owner or some type of manager for that business. And with a code enforcement officer really not having any type of, of leverage to demand this information, a lot of times it causes a prolonged investigation. Uh, it can also take away from the uniform officers on the street because they'll have to call a uniformed officer to come over. Simply, this ordinance would allow the code enforcement officer to say, listen, sir, if I need this information, if you don't give it to me, then I won't have to call a uniformed officer over and there'll be an additional charge interference with government, interference with a code enforcement officer. So, it's just a, an additive incentive, the same as we have in the ordinance for animal control.
So, if, if a code enforcement officer demands a person's personal information and is denied that, is the code enforcement officer post-certified?
No.
So, the code enforcement officer would have to call a uniformed police officer anyways, which is what the remedy was before this proposed.
Understand.
And if the person under the current ordinance doesn't give that information to the uniformed person that would be called anyways, it'd still be in violation of that.
Well, it, it.
Is that right?
If, if they call a uniformed officer and the uniformed officer believes that that information is needed and that person does not comply, then there will be a criminal charge of obstruction. And again, the hope is, is that if a, if a person is, is notified that there could be an additional charge, then they may comply with the code enforcement officer who is a non-sworn person, same as animal control officers are non-sworn, they're not post-certified.
So, we're threatening our citizens.
Well, we're, we're.
We'll give you two tickets instead of one if I have to call a cop.
Well, we're, we're trying to get information because.
Right, but I mean, if, under the current law, give me your information or I'll call a cop. And if they don't give it to the officer, as you said, it can be a criminal violation. But if this ordinance passes, they're still gonna say, give me your information or I'm calling a cop, right? Because the cops only won't authorize to actually extract that information. So, it could be two violations or citations for the same, I'll call it offense, for me not giving my personal information out to a non-post-certified person.
Well, that, that's discretionary when the police officer arrives, but.
So, this just gives police officers more discretion?
If the, if the police officer.
To which laws they, they enforce?
Well, if the police officer arrived and they were able to extract the information, then of course, the police officer, uh, or the code enforcement officer uses their discretion, they've got the information that they want, but based on their discretion, they, if we do approve this ordinance, then the code enforcement officer has the discretion to write the person an additional citation for interference with a code enforcement officer, the same as it is for animal control officers currently.
So, what does it say in this code that a law enforcement officer has discretion as to which laws they enforce? Because I'm seeing here it is, it will be prima facie evidence of a violation. So, what does it say an officer has discretion as to what laws they enforce?
Well, it will be prima facie, but hopefully, with the leverage that the ordinance will create, a law enforcement officer may not need to be called. But if they are called, and again, if that information is needed and the county has a rightful, uh, the right to get that information, then there could be a criminal charge.
I think y'all know where I feel on.
Yeah, back, back to Commissioner Gregory's question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, what brought this on? Is there some record of so many people not, uh, abiding by what, what's in place now?
Commissioner.
Speaking to Mike, please.
Our chief magistrate, our chief magistrate court judge has convened a, a committee, and I'm a member of, some of the law department members are members of, and other officials in the county government. Meet with her and some issues brought up this summer when we talked about county ordinance enforcement was this issue of interference, the interference that our code enforcement officers receive from time to time from citizens who don't want to cooperate with them and trying to enforce the code. And, uh, with that time was brought, why don't we have an ordinance that addresses this like we do for animal control? And that was what, that was impetus of us writing this. And I was tasked by the committee to, to draft it, and of course, it was submitted to the law department to be sure that it would meet the approval and brought before we all.
I have a follow-up question to that, Major Green. And I, I know the answer, but hopefully, you can share it publicly. The percentage of county code violations that the magistrate court reduces the fines and penalties on is approximately what?
Sorry.
I believe the chief magistrate judge last told me when we had a meeting that it was somewhere around three quarters. So, we're talking about creating a situation where we're gonna demand more information in this, in this world of private information. And then, even if we go through that process, they have a history of reducing those fines or waiving them anyways. So, again, I don't see the need, and it reminds me of something like nineteen thirties Germany. That's what, that's what it feels like, it seems like a police state.
Well, how are we gonna hold?
And it's not just code. Oh, I don't know the answer to that, but more laws and more law enforcement officers and more penalties, a person's walking down the street and it's not just code enforcement, it's for animal control, building inspectors, and anybody else, um, so authorized by this code, which it doesn't even define how it's authorized or how that person's even gonna be distinguished from anybody else. What if it's a person cutting the grass, says, I'm a county employee, what's your name, address, birth date, phone number, or else I'm gonna cite you? And the law says you're automatically guilty.
Well, how are we gonna hold people accountable?
Doesn't say it's out of discretion of the police officer.
You know, as we try to clean up this county and hold people accountable for violations of the law under the county ordinances, if we can't get the information that is needed.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know the answer to that, but I personally don't believe a, 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 a larger police state with more broad, broader powers is the answer.
Well.
We're supposed to be a community.
The way I see it now, they go out there now, knock on doors, and, and if there's a violation, they request information. If somebody slams the door on their, on their face and say, hey, well, I'm not gonna provide you the information, we supposed to just tuck our tails and walk away? And then we get additional calls about there's a violation while y'all not doing anything about it? At some point, we gotta have some teeth in the law to make sure that we get voluntary compliance.
You have to recollect, Mr. Chairman, that when you weren't chairman and that you were the interim chief, and you and I had this conversation about the proposal I had of moving code enforcement from where it was in community development to the police department, you endorsed it because we would have post-certified people supervising the non-post-certified code enforcement officers specifically to address that issue.
Well, if I remember correctly, it was because we had a code enforcement officer to go to somebody's house and they got shot at. So, therefore, bridging the, bringing the two together as a, as a added level, level of security was another main reason. But as time changes, as the chief has said, when you have to bring a law enforcement officer off the street from doing his regular patrols and answering calls for service for a real emergency, this could alleviate some of that, uh, some additional manpower for the officer.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like you know where it was coming from now, right?
I, I understand the, um.
No more questions.
The concern both ways. Um, and Commissioner Emerson did point out a very valid concern. If it's a prima facie, if, if it means honest face, if I don't tell you my name, I have violated a code and I have potentially been subjected to a misdemeanor and can be in jail for not giving you my name, then that is a problem. It may need to be re, reworked and tweaked, but that, that would be, that would add some concern. Because while we are all good intentioned, everyone is not. And when met with any officer or any employee of the county and they say, just on their word, you have violated the ordinance, now I've got to take time off of my job, go down to court, have it reduced if that's gonna happen, or be subjected to going to jail because I did not give my name on a co-vibration, I think we, we, we need to rework that.
Commissioner Rooks, uh, understand, and of course, this is a verbiage that came out of the committee. Uh, you know, currently what happens, uh, is, again, if, if the person refuses to give information, the code enforcement thinks it necessary, they have to call a uniformed officer over. Uniformed officer, they come over and if information is not given, then the only alternative is a criminal charge. This, uh, was actually, uh, speaking with Major Green, uh, who. uh, who is our representative with the committee, was just a, an incentive for, uh, two things. An incentive for the citizen to comply, and number two, uh, it, uh, gives the code enforcement officer, uh, you know, the ability to, uh, have a mechanism if they are trying to rectify a, a code enforcement issue to get the necessary information and make the necessary charges.
I also would like to say, you know, as much as we want to, I know I want to see the county cleaner, but I, I still don't agree. I agree that, you know, just fining more citizens, it... Well, not fining them for not giving their name is not going to solve it. Fining, you know, we haven't been fining anybody or dropping the charges lately, and we hadn't cleaned it up. What about, Major, have you looked into things like looking up the property owners or, or just whatever? I, I just, I have a problem with that, again, just putting more tax on the citizen more for not giving their name. Yeah, fine them for not cleaning it up, but it's a way. I mean, we got access to the tax records and everything that we...
And the person service though requires the, uh, we have to know the person's name, their address, the phone number, or the issue of summons, bring them to court. So if I got a violation there at the house, I need, I need them to cooperate with me to give information so I can go to the court for a judge. It's not a burden to prove that they go to the office before the court.
And, and I, and I guess that goes back to what Commissioner Rooks and Emerson were saying. Maybe we don't have the answers, or maybe we need to go back to the table on this. Because again, if it, it's, it's just not the answer. Maybe we just need to go back to the table on this one.
Um, yeah, Chris Evans and I worked together on, about the, um, the, uh, I'm the house owner. I wasn't going to work with him, Commissioner Rooks, anyone else that, that y'all been working with. We worked on ordinance, fine, we had it.
I understand our need to, to do something. I don't think that language does it. So I will, if I can, Mr. Chairman, I move that we table ordinance number, what is it, two thousand fifteen something? What's the number?
I don't know, I'd like to, since I've got a motion made in a second. I'd like to just vote it down and let them bring it back as opposed to just changing a sentence.
Change, change the language.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead.
All right. Any other questions? Here are none. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
It's unanimous. So work on it, re-draft it, and bring something, bring us back something.
Commissioners, that's all I have. I need to request an executive session for real estate and litigation.
Item number sixteen is an appointment to the Tax Assessor's Board to fill the expiring term of Mr. Garvey Seals. The term is a three-year term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Garvey Seals.
Uh, sucking it, properly moving to sucking. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three, two. Passes.
Mr. Chairman, this does conclude this evening's agenda. Is there any other matters to bring before this board? Here are none. We did have a request to go into executive session on real estate and litigation.
Is there a motion going to the executive session?
Move to go into executive session.
Is there a sucking? Well, sucking it, properly moving to sucking. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, motion to reconvene.
A second.
Properly moving to sucking. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Ah, Ms. Barnes.
Commissioners, Resolution number twenty fifteen dash two ninety-eight is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a settlement agreement and release with Paul R. Freeman and Checkers Drive-In Restaurants Incorporated for matters pertaining to Clayton County Superior Court Civil File, Civil Action File Number two thousand eight, C V zero four eight five two dash nine. And Resolution number twenty fifteen dash two ninety-nine is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a settlement agreement and general release settling all claims set forth in matters pertaining to Deborah Stanley.
All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept those recommendations.
Is there a sucking? Now, sucking it, properly moving to sucking. Any questions on either, either item? Here are none. Those in favor, aye? Opposed? It's unanimous. Motion, motion to adjourn, please.
Before we motion to adjourn, I just wanted to mention that I think the variance board hearing could not meet, could not be held last week because, um, lack of a quorum.
Which board?
Which one? Appeals Board.
Again.
Appeals.
Well, who notifies the, uh, people about the meeting?
I don't know. Um, I had someone to call me because they had an interest in something that was not a, it was a citizen, not a... Who's missing, you know?
I'm asking because my person that was on the board doesn't get any, uh, notification.
I don't know.
We want to take him off.
Do they not set the next board meeting at the end of their meetings?
I don't know, but I, I asked him. That's why I wanted him to...
The board of appeals is a large board, right? So three that we put on, and then a whole bunch of others, right?
I believe it's either five or seven.
Yes, yes. It's pretty big, but we put them all up, up there, right? The Board of Commissioners put all these people on there.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Find out first, Chris, then email us the answer to that.
And notify them, yeah.
Madam Clerk, do you know who notifies board members of their next meeting?
The chairperson, somebody?
Well, each board has a chairperson.
The Board of Zoning Appeals, Board of Appeals Zoning.
Mm-hmm.
I know that the Community Development Department does that, um...
The chairman is Dr. Don McMillan.
I'm just saying, because I know my guy never gets any notification.
And that's the one that we've had problems with where, whether it be community or community development, they haven't been able to even get the door unlocked a couple of times.
That was only one time. That was only one time. I did it.
So, uh, you know, what staff members they have...
Miscommunication evidently.
I don't know.
All right, if you can find that out for us, uh, we'll get it to the board. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved here.
Well, sucking it, properly moving to sucking. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.